All right, so good afternoon, everyone. The Housing and Affairs Committee, Councilman John Bullock, serving as Chair. You can also see my son George in the background, who I'm trying to get control of. Night's not on, honey. So again, today we have two issues in front of us. The first one is a bill that's introduced by Councilman Dorsey. We'll get started in a second, but I want to recognize the members of the committee. So we do have from the 3rd District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, from the 4th District, Councilman Bill Henry, Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District, Councilman Z. Cohen of the 1st, and then also Vice Chair to the Committee, Councilman Yitzi Slifer of the 5th District, and it will be joined by some others as well. Just going down the list, I definitely want to thank Richard Kerber, staff to the committee. I see Donovan McIlroy from the Council President's Office. Also, we have, let's see, Bob Seneme from Finance, Elena Pietro from Law. Again, thank you for your reports. We'll talk about it in a second. Also Rebecca Tab Simmons, also Tisha Edwards from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and Stephanie Murdock also from Housing. We have a few people from Housing, obviously, with this. Again, we have Jay Green, Bob Pivik, Stephanie Murdock. Also see Bill Wells from HABC, so thank you all for joining us. Hold on for one second. All right, so again, thank you, thank you all for the time today. Without further ado, I do want to talk about the first item in front of us today, which is City Council Bill 200592, Ordinance Office to End Homelessness. Again, I want to go directly to Councilman Ryan Dorsey, sponsor of the bill, for some initial comments, and then we'll get into the agency report. So without further ado, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to my colleagues and everybody else here today for allowing this bill to be heard, and for all of the effort you've already put in to preparing for this hearing today. Much appreciated. This bill is really important to the advancement of the city's goals on, to end homelessness and in furtherance of the belief and adherence to our effort to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring. And everything about this bill is intended to enhance our efforts in that pursuit. I want to say from the very outset that nothing about this bill should be construed to be any sort of affront to any of the work that is already being done or has been done by the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services or any partners to them. That rather, this bill, in the part that addresses the creation of a permanent housing, homelessness office, is meant only to solidify that such an office exists as homelessness is a continuous and significant problem for the city, and that it's worthy of having permanence in the structure of our government, in an office, to address it. And that in doing that, we also serve the public better and the general welfare of the city by creating clear guidelines by which that office will advance the goal of making homelessness rare, brief, and nonrecurring, or more appropriately, as the title of this office in this bill would indicate, ending homelessness. In the other part of this bill of significance is the creation of a housing voucher program that's intended to be funded locally with local dollars, and specifically to transition people out of permanent supportive housing. As I said, there's great work, or if I didn't say it clearly, there is great work happening in the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. There is great work happening here in Baltimore City to serve the city's homeless population, but of course, it's still not enough. And one of the gaps that exists is a pathway out of homelessness. Right now, for those in the greatest need, we have, the Office of Homeless Services and its partners are serving more than 800 clients, households, who are now in permanent supportive housing, but for many or most of them, there is no next step after that. And what this voucher program, this rental assistance program, would do specifically is to create a next step for those who are ready to transition out of permanent supportive housing, give them a next place that they can go with rental assistance, and clear the deck for new people continuing to experience homelessness, to move into permanent supportive housing, therefore, creating space for us to continue to be able to serve the most vulnerable in Baltimore City. I think that's a basic introduction here. I'll just say that we've received the bill reports for this bill, and I know we're going to go straight to the agencies to hear about their bill reports, but I put in some work over the last few hours with the Law Department. I think that we've come up with a number of ways to address the Law Department's concerns. I have sent around some amendments to the committee members, and I have requested a couple of other basic amendments to further address Law Department concerns, and we can address those when the moment arises. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Dorsey. We're going to straight to the committee reports. I know you did mention Law, and we have reports from everybody, so I'm not sure who wants to go first, but I guess we can go to Law if that suits you. Also Finance, HCD, I mean, everybody has something to say. So I'm looking at Law, you ready?
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Thank you. One point that I did neglect to mention, that you and I discussed earlier, one really critical amendment that addresses a point that is raised in, I believe, every single one of the agency reports. I just want to put this on the table right now for everybody to understand. Prior to the introduction of this bill, just before the introduction of this bill, it was brought to my attention that there's a conflict in the bill as to the power that the City Council may or may not have to appropriate funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I accepted immediately that this is something that would have to be amended in the bill. I tried to convey this to everybody possible, yet it is brought up in every single agency report. And I guess I'm saying this so that I can save us all a lot of time and energy in saying that there is an amendment here to change the shall to a may, so that the funding from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so that the City Council is not overstepping its authority here. And I'm hoping, I have every expectation that this is going to be a favorable amendment to the committee, and so I would hope that in our discussion, we can address it as such, that there's no intention here to overstep the authority, and that we can focus our conversation perhaps on the bigger things.
All right, well, thank you, Councilman Dorsey. So Elena, with Law, do you want to chime in now?
Sure. So I wrote a fairly lengthy report. I'm not going to read it. I'm just going to go over the major points of it and suggest some things that we could do to make it more palatable. So I had a general problem with the idea of creating an office that seems to be doing what a lot of other people are doing, and may not really have the authority to do it. Because if you look at the state law, it's fairly straightforward, it's very straightforward when it talks about housing authorities. And now, they are bearing the, they are the ones that are given the authority by state law to provide for all these different housing programs for states. I mean, it says that every jurisdiction shall have a housing authority of one kind or another, and their mission is to, let me look at my report here, their mission statement, I think, says it all when it says, authorizes the authority to do all that is necessary. It's the purpose of the state law to authorize the authorities to do all that's necessary and desirable to secure financial aid and cooperation of political subdivisions, state and federal governments, to help authority undertake to operate its projects. So anyway, so I felt like that right there sort of limited what the scope of this office could do. And then we have the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services that right now is the recipient of all the federal continuum of care resources, because it's the designated person or entity in the city for that. But I just saw that there was a proposed amendment that talks, that adds a uncodified Section 5, which talks about the Office to End Homelessness would become the successor entity to the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. If that's the case, that sort of changes my look at this particular part of the bill. And I could say that if we said something like, well, I guess my question for the sponsor is, do you intend to operate concurrently with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services for a period of time? Or is this office only going to start operating when that office, when it's merged or succeeds to the authority or powers of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services? Do you hear me?
Well, there's also an amendment that I've asked, that I've drafted to address a concern of the Council President's Office to further prolong implementation from the 90 days specified in the bill to 180 days.
I was going to suggest that you could put something in, like this bill should not take effect until 30 days after the, you know, transfer or whatever to the Mayor's, to the Office of, to End Homelessness. So that's another possibility. And that would certainly alleviate a lot of my concerns about the situation, like a duplication of authority, of people trying to do, you know, the same thing for the same groups. So anyway, that's a thought that you could consider in that regard, and that, like I said, would help me a lot in my issues with this, as part of the bill. The other thing I could suggest is, in Section 4-6, where you talk about in general, and on line 20, after, after shall in line 25, could add something, to the extent that no other, that no other city agencies are providing these services, the office shall be responsible for programs and support provided by the city, blah, blah, blah. So that's another way that I think that we could remediate the issue of the duplication and the, whether there's a, you know, whether it allows for that duplication in certain purpose.
And then, at one point that I wanted to make as well, I appreciate this conversation, and even just looking at the agency reports and some of the amendments coming in, it looks as if we're going to need some more time to work on this, so that's something that we can be open to. So I do want to just put that out there, because again, this is something serious. We want to make sure that we do it right, rather than doing it quickly. The other part that I want to mention, also see that Matt Stegman up in the Mayor's Office joined us along with Mara James, so just wanted to note your presence. And then also, given that we spent a lot of time talking about the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, it might be good to have Tisha Edwards say a few words, because again, as Councilman Dorsey said, we appreciate your work, and want to make sure we're all on the same page here. So if you're ready, Ms. Edwards, you're here for me.
Hi, thank you so much, Councilmember Burnett, for bringing this bill forward for discussion. We have submitted an agency report that outlines our position related to this bill. In light of everything that has been said, I think I would like to focus on a couple of key things. First of all, I think that everyone in the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services agrees that we should all be working very hard to make as many housing options available for our neighbors who have experienced homelessness. We know that there is a need for a continuum of services for our neighbors, and we support the work that Councilman Dorsey has been leading, and the partnership, the deep partnership we have with the COC, and many others across the city to address this critical need. So I think we come to this discussion really open, and we come to this discussion understanding that, at the end of the day, we're all trying to work together to find solutions to a really complex and multi-dimensional challenge that our city is facing. But with that being said, there are some specific issues related to the legislation that we would like to lift up for the council. The first is that, you know, the way that the bill is currently written, we think it has significant limitations in how we would actually implement what is being described. First and foremost, the bill initially talks about a $1.3 million funding coming from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I understand, according to Councilman Dorsey, that there is some adjustments and some amendments that are going to be made, and so now we're moving from not having an identified financial resource to, it seems to be not clear what the financial resource would be, other than if at this point, because of the limitations, we would need to go to the general fund to implement the local housing voucher fund. We think that the bill doesn't adequately fund the agency to actually implement a said voucher program. If the intent is to have $1.3 million in resources available to potential residents who need housing, there will need to be a significant, and we estimate that to be in the $1 million range, of resources to actually execute the, and implement the housing voucher, local housing voucher program. The agency is currently staffed, does not have the capacity or the internal infrastructure to actually implement a voucher program. All of our current housing programs are through sub-grantees in partnership with organizations who have great capacity and expertise in this area. Our agency currently does not implement any voucher programs. So if that becomes an expectation of this new agency, then there is going to be a fiscal impact, and we will need to designate funding specifically to handle those administrative expenses. We're also very adamant that included in that infrastructure should be the availability of supportive services for clients who take advantage of this resource. The data is very clear that individuals who have experienced homelessness, they are able to thrive and avoid future homelessness the more support that they have. And so to have a local voucher program that does not fund voluntary supportive services is, in our opinion, very short-sighted, and is to counter to the intended purpose of the bill. Another significant concern of ours is that the bill that's currently written is really focused, as Councilman Dorsey said, towards those individuals who are transitioning out of permanent, out of permanent housing. And we think that there's a much greater need in opportunity to support some of our more vulnerable residents that we work with on a regular basis. And so we think that the council should rethink the focus on moving folks out of permanent supportive housing. We're not saying that that's not important, but it's not where the greatest need is. The greatest need, from our experience, are much more vulnerable residents who are very hard to place in housing, and those individuals, as I said, would need additional supportive services. So we would really encourage Council, Councilman Dorsey and other members of the council to kind of step back and rethink, who is the target population, where is the greatest need? And there is lots of need to go around, so I don't want to misspeak regarding that. But we think that there is a more vulnerable population with a much greater need, with much more challenging placement options, that we would like to make this resource available to. And with the vouchers, as I said, we would also need administrative support and resources to effectively operationalize Councilman Dorsey's intended and stated goals in this, in this bill as currently written. So those are, other than some things that have already been said, Councilman Bullock, from just an execution of the, I think, most important part of this bill, which is about the resources to residents, I think I would like to focus my comments in that area, because there are other agency leaders who will speak to some other areas within the bill that may need attention.
Yeah, Ms. Edwards, thank you again, you know, for your commentary. Again, I know this is a very much a multifaceted issue, so definitely appreciate your perspective. As far as council colleagues, I see we've also been joined by Chris Burnett, Councilman Chris Burnett of the 8th District. Thanks for joining us. And then, since we mentioned a couple of things, one is around the finances of the piece, the other one is around just the execution. So I would like to go to our finance folks really quickly, not really quickly, but immediately, and then transition to both HCD and HABC. So let's hear from Finance, and then we'll move to our housing agencies. Good.
Okay, thank you, Council Committee Chair Bullock. My name is Mara James from BBMR, representing Finance. I also have Bob Seneme, the Budget Director, on the call. We, the issue of the funding for the program, which we, which Councilman Dorsey discussed, was a concern to us, and had us go, had us lean towards oppose. We don't oppose the creation of the office, it's just the legal issues of being able to appropriate from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, this legislation, which is being addressed. In terms of funding outside of that, any funds that would need to come from the general fund for this, to implement this, would have to go through the annual budget process. It can't be a given, and considering the constraints on the general fund right now, we can't commit to meeting these funding needs via net. The fiscal analysis that we did conduct was related to the staffing and talking with MOHS about the staffing that they needed, and we had that at around 221,000. But beyond that scope for other implementation, we didn't have, we were not able to get numbers for software and needs like that for the program. So yeah, happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. And since we're in this vein, I know that Law had another piece they wanted to reference, so if you want to do that, and if there are any questions for Finance, we can talk about those now before we go on to our housing agency. So Elena?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We've already talked about the funding, so I won't go into that. As far as the rest of the bill is concerned, there were just a few items that were a little problematic in terms of their contracting authority. They're, you know, the office would not be an entity unto itself, it'd be part of the Mayor's City Council of Baltimore, which is how we do all our contracting, in the name of the Mayor's City Council. So that should be tweaked to reflect that. I thought that Section 4-22 was a little misleading in terms of what were the conditions under, maybe misleading is probably not the right word, but confusing with respect to what conditions would lead to loss of the housing, of a person's housing assistance. They give the list of things that would be allowed, that would be reasons for termination, and then in the next section said that they weren't, they would have to be particularly serious or egregious to result in termination. So I think that makes it unclear as to what, to a person, as to when they would be susceptible to termination of their assistance. So I think that needs to be shored up a little bit. In Section 4-26, the delegation of authority to the hearing officer, generally, the city government cannot delegate their authority to a third party without oversight or without standards. There's really no standards here upon which the hearing officers should make their calls. So we suggested that the language concerning final decisions or final recommend things like that should be removed, and that at the end, it would be, any final decisions would be made by the Executive Director of the office. Let's see, only one or two more things. The Section 4-27 talks about that the hearings would be made in an informal manner, and that the rules of evidence, formal rules of evidence and trial procedures would not apply. Then it goes on to, I think, provide for the application of some of the more, of some more complicated concepts with respect to probative evidence and competency and relevancy and things like that. And I'm not sure whether the clientele that are coming to these hearings are going to, they're probably not going to be represented by council, and I think that we should make this a simple, a simpler process and delete some of these references here, because I think it would make this a more arduous situation for clients that are coming in to be heard about why their assistance was terminated. And I think we talked, I didn't talk about this, and I didn't hear anybody else bring it up, but Section 5, that talks about the transition of the Director of the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services over to the Executive Director position of the Office to End Homelessness. I mean, that really can't be legislated, that's, you know, that's an intrusion upon the executive branch, really. So I guess if that person made an offer and they want to go, that's fine, but you can't really compel it there. So that's the end of my comments, and I'm happy to work with the council to come to, you know, raise the language to meet the legal sufficiency.
Well, thank you again for digging into the details of this piece. We know it's a heavy lift for all of us, and I know that Councilman Dorsey's been having some conversations, I know, moving forward, trying to tighten this up, so that's very helpful. I do want to, Councilman Dorsey, do you have anything you want to add at this point before we go to the House agencies?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The number of things that the Law Department just raised were all discussed between us prior to the hearing. Some of the concerns that were raised are already addressed by amendments that the committee members have had sent to them, and that the Law Department has as well. For example, the issue in Section 5, the transition provision is modified, would be modified by an amendment to simply be an expression of intent. And I have asked the Department of Legislative Reference to address some of the other concerns. Section, well, as was just said, there seems to, there's some question as to whether there's a conflict over the use of the word informal to describe the nature of hearings, but then to also discuss evidence to, that can be used in these hearings. This, it should be noted, is copied directly, verbatim, from the city's health code. So this is language that already exists for essentially an identical kind of purpose in the city of Baltimore. And, but that if there's a, you know, if there's a reason why the use of the word informal is such a problem, I mean, it is used to indicate that the rule, as was noted, that the stringency, the stringency- that the stringency, the stringency of the rules that exist in a court of law before a judge are more stringent. And the use of the word "informal" is simply to indicate that that level of stringency does not apply, as is the case commonly in administrative hearings. But that also doesn't say that the administrative hearings can't set out its own guidelines for the use of evidence. And I think that it's reasonable to think that people can understand this. If it were really such an unforgivable circumstance, I would not be opposed to the removal of the word "informal." But to go beyond that would seem like we were really delving into, pick apart, again, something that is lifted verbatim from the city of Baltimore's health code, which is also based pretty directly on the state of Maryland's Administrative Procedure Act. With respect to the delegation of authority to a hearing officer, which, again, is taken directly from the city's health code, I accept, and have already asked the Department of Legislative Reference, as I discussed also with the Law Department prior to this hearing, that we would, per the Law Department's recommendations in the report, strike the words "or final" in a number of places and add a section that clarifies that final decisions must be made by the Director of the Office. So I believe that we have, in essentially all of the cases that have been brought up, a remedy either already drafted and in the committee members' inboxes or a request before DLR to already, already to make, to draft such amendments as would resolve the concerns. Mr. Chair, those are my, I know you want to move on to the Housing Department, but I was unsure as to when you wanted discussion to occur with MOHS. That was what I opened up.
Yes, I know we did hear from Ms. Edwards, just in terms of their perspective. This is going to be ongoing conversation. I think the other part that's, you know, that we're saying is that, you know, I appreciate, you know, both your work and also the work of our different agencies in terms of the amendments. And clearly, we're going to need to schedule some more time to flesh this out. So again, we could continue doing that as well. But given that there's been discussion around execution of the program, as was the vouchers and trust fund and some of the things that are mentioned, I do want to hear a bit from HCD. So I'm not sure who the point person is going to be for today, but I see Stephanie Murdock.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm joined here today by Bob Pipick, our Chief of Policy and Partnership, John Mobley, our Trust Fund Manager for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and also Jay Green, our Chief of Operations. And if Jay has not been elevated to a panelist level, if you could do that for us, Mr. Chair, I'd appreciate that. So I want to start, thank you. I want to start by saying that DHCD supports the intent of this bill. We already operate a number of programs out of DHCD's Office of Homeownership and Neighborhood Preservation, intended to keep people in their homes. Additionally, the revised Affordable Housing Trust Fund Spending Plan, approved by the Commission, contains $1.3 million in funding for rent supplements, which are proposed to be in the form of a voucher program. However, we do have a number of concerns that have also been shared by the Law Department and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. I don't want to delve too deeply into the legal authority of the appropriation or the legal authority to establish the voucher program. I think that the Law Department has covered that, and it sounds like the Councilman, the sponsor, is well on his way to addressing some of those concerns through amendments that have been drafted or are being drafted. I do want to focus on the role of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission. As proposed, this legislation would circumvent the role of the Commission in working with and advising the department on how to best allocate the Affordable Housing Trust Funds. The city charter explicitly establishes the duties of the Commission, and one of those includes consulting with the Department of Housing regarding expenditures. If enacted, this legislation would circumvent the role in that respect. Statutory constraints on the spending plan will limit the ability to adapt the use of the fund to meet changing circumstances. For instance, in July of this year, the FY '20 and FY '21 spending plans were revised due to a decline in total anticipated revenue from $33.5 million to $21 million, and to allocate $2.75 million for pandemic relief efforts. The primary source of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund funding, which is a surcharge on high-value real estate, recrodation, and transfer taxes, is highly volatile by nature and will vary year to year, under any circumstances. If enacted, this legislation would limit the department and the Commission's ability to respond to the volatility of those funding sources and unanticipated events. In conclusion, this legislation also sets a dangerous precedent for the future use of Affordable Housing Trust Funds. It diminishes the ability to meet the spending priorities established by the agency and the Commission for a number of other worthy and necessary programs. And just to close, we are looking forward to reviewing the amendments that have been offered, as well as amendments that are being drafted, and continuing to work with the sponsor and the members of the committee to see how we can make this work. As I started off, we are in support of the intent of this program, and we have made available a number of folks from DHCD staff that might be able to answer any additional questions you may have.
So first, I want to say thank you, Stephanie. And one of the things that we talked about, even as we were sponsoring the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Bill, was around the issue for the variability of the funds, you know, given that it was transfer and recrodation tax. So we definitely understand that point. And also, Jay Green has been elevated to panelist. So if he or anyone else from the team wants to add some comments, we're open for it.
Mr. Chair, this is Jay Green. And I think Stephanie covered all of the points that the department wanted to make. We talked about it and reviewed it internally, and I think she's covered all of the salient points for the department.
Okay, well, you do appreciate those comments. I don't know if anyone else from, I see Bill Wells from HABC. Does HABC have any comments at this time?
We don't have any, sorry, Bill Wells, Senior Vice President for Business Strategy at the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. Good afternoon. We didn't have any specific comments yet. We were hoping to be able to have more dialogue about how this bill was evolving, how the program was evolving. We share some of the concerns from Law and in practical terms about the duplication of programs with the large housing choice voucher program that HABC currently operates in Baltimore City. And without taking a position on the statutory ability of, you know, the two programs side by side, there are concerns about, you know, applicants to multiple voucher programs that are very similar within the city and causing confusion on the part of applicants, landlords, or just in general about differentiating the two programs. We have been consulting principally with BBMR about, you know, what it takes to run a voucher program and recognizing that at the scale that's envisioned in Councilwoman Dorsey's initial $1.3 million, that's a very small voucher program. And there's, we would caution that there are some changes in scale. Say, when HABC operates a program of 17,600-plus vouchers in the last six months, for instance, that there would be certain economies of scale or also ways that there wouldn't be a direct correlation in terms of staffing or other aspects of the program. But we look forward to speaking more about it and sharing our experiences so that if the city does stand up their own voucher program, that we can make sure that it's as successful as possible.
Again, thank you for all the comments. I know Bill's sponsor is here, but also I know there's some other folks who are panelists and maybe some other folks that have comments. So I do want to provide the sponsor, any questions or a comment at this point before we start going on to agencies or public testimony. And I don't know if also MOHS had anything else that they wanted to add at this point, too. So Ms. Edwards, I'll go with you, and I see Councilwoman Dorsey. So let's go back and forth. Yes, Ms. Edwards?
Hi, I just want to acknowledge Councilwoman Bullock that I do have another meeting at 3 o'clock, but I do have a colleague, Katie York, who is on the line. So if this conversation extends, she is more than able to represent the agency. Thank you.
Perfect, she's been elevated to panelist, so there we go. All right, and Councilwoman Dorsey, do you have anything at this point before we go to any additional comments, testimony?
Yes, I do, thank you. Just regarding MOHS's testimony, I mean, this, the creation of a voucher program specifically to move people from permanent supportive housing is, it marries together two explicit goals spelled out in the action plan of the city regarding homelessness. The creation of a local voucher program has long been stated in the continuum of care and MOHS's action strategy. And as has a move-on strategy. And just let's be real clear, that's exactly what this is, a move-on strategy. Our permanent supportive housing, MOHS, per their report, oversees more than 800 households in permanent supportive housing at present. This voucher program, if it were implemented even to the extent that is kind of intended at this point, even if it were implemented with, if it were implemented within whatever funding might be available, say, through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund at this point, if the trust fund chose to fund this, it would represent less than 10% of the number of people, less than 10% the number of people who are served through the permanent supportive housing would be able to be served through this program. I think it's reasonable, and I know that exists right now, at least the number of people in permanent supportive housing who are ready to transition out of permanent supportive housing, where they still need the housing assistance, but don't need the wraparound services anymore. It's appropriate for those people to no longer take up space in the permanent supportive housing program when all they need is the housing assistance. Transitioning them up out of permanent supportive housing creates the opportunity for those most vulnerable, most difficult-to-place part of the population experiencing homelessness to have a place opened up for them in the permanent supportive housing program. It's exactly the same as if we were to augment the dollars currently available specifically for permanent supportive housing. It makes the existing, it makes the existing available resources go farther while allowing them to not be drawn on by people who do not need everything that it is providing.
So one thing I'll say, Councilwoman Dorsey, I appreciate, you know, diligence you've taken to delve into some of these issues. And I know some of our previous comments have been around not only the permanent supportive housing, but then also looking at some of the wraparound services as well. And so I know we're going to have the work session, so I don't want to get into all the details now, but if there's any response at this point, it looks like, I don't know, MOHS has had something to say to back and forth tonight. But again, I do want to get testimony.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bullock, and we are looking forward to the work session. And I just like to say, Councilwoman Dorsey, for those of us that are in the field and actually doing the work, we'd like to respectfully disagree with your assumptions that you have embedded in here. I, as I said in my comments, the need is great. The question is, where is there the greatest need? And as I've stated in our agency response, we, in our work that we do every single day on the ground and our work that we do with partners, the Continuum Care has available to it $22 million in federal funding that if it would like to use those funds and, as you said, move into the next level of implementation of the action plan, which we fully support, the Continuum of Care has the authority to do so. If you are going to create a local voucher program, I think it's very important that the agency that is charged with implementation. The funding that we currently have is granted out to other sub-grantees. We don't, we do not implement a housing voucher program in our agency. Our partners do. If your expectation is that the agency will take on that responsibility, there is cost associated with that. And if you would like the agency to take on that responsibility, I respectfully ask that you engage the agency in due diligence and conversation about where there is the greatest need. Not saying that individuals who are currently in permanent supportive housing don't need a next step, they do. But we also know on the other side of that continuum, we have a highly vulnerable population that has much, much more limited options. And we think that there is a critical and emergency need to fund those types of housing options, which includes ensuring that there are supportive services available to those vulnerable populations. So I would just like to say that the agency respectfully disagrees, Councilwoman Dorsey, on who these dollars should be targeted towards. But what we do agree with, Councilwoman Dorsey, is that there is a great need and the continuum of support and resources and housing options for Baltimore City's residents is very varied. You know, I know that every councilperson here has had conversations with advocates who have been asking for us to provide immediate housing for individuals who are in shelters. Well, guess what, Councilwoman Dorsey, your bill and these resources would not be directed towards those individuals. So we have, in our care today, over 400 people, all who would like to have housing, who are in shelters. And your bill would not support them. And so we need, Councilwoman Dorsey, as an agency, to partner with you, to do some due diligence, and to have a more thoughtful conversation about where these resources would be directed. Having a bill that says that these dollars...
I think that, I take issue with the implication...
Excuse me, Councilwoman Dorsey, I'm leaving the call in a few minutes, and I would just like to make sure that the record is clear on this, that the agency agrees that more should be done for housing options for individuals who have faced homelessness in the city. But the agency strongly disagrees with the limitations that you have put in a local housing voucher program. I appreciate you bringing this issue forward. We are looking forward to more conversations and partnership. And I am going to defer to my colleague, Katie York, who is on the phone for any future conversations. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Dorsey, for being a leader in this space.
Councilman, you're muted. Chairman, you're muted, we didn't hear you.
Got you, thank you so much. So one thing I was going to say, one of the key words as mentioned was being respectful. So even if we disagree, being respectful in that space, but also partnership. So the fact is that, you know, we all recognize, again, homelessness, affordable housing, these are major issues in our city for our residents. And so I'm trying to work together and get the best piece of legislation we can and the best execution of it. So again, we will be having a work session moving forward. So even between now and then, working on what those amendments are going to look like and also dealing with our agencies is going to be very important. So again, I thank everybody who's at the table on this. But I know there are some folks who probably have some testimony. So if there are folks who had additional comments that we have not yet heard, I do want to provide an opportunity before we... before we go on to our next agenda item for the day. So is there anyone else who's either a panelist or anyone else who's on the phone who wanted to provide commentary on this bill? And any members, and also ask any members of the committee, if there are any other members of the committee who have comments or questions for our agency representatives, I'd like to hear from you now as well. Okay, so I'll ask Richard to see if there's any, are there any calling users? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yes, so Councilman Dorsey, yes, please.
Carolyn Johnson from Homeless Persons' Representation Project is on here as a panelist. May we hear from her?
Oh, yes, please, please.
Thank you.
Please. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Yeah, Ms. Johnson, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Bullock, Vice Chair, and all the members of the committee for the opportunity to speak today in support of Council Bill 20592. I'd like to give a special thanks to Councilman Dorsey for his vision and leadership on this bill. On a personal note, I'm really proud of this bill and what it stands for, proud of the public policy statement it makes and the values that it expresses. I think Baltimore ought to be proud, too, as it reaffirms the city's commitment to ending homelessness. And I want to echo Councilman Dorsey's initial statements by saying that I've, I've been interacting with the various interactions of the city's Home Services Agency for 22 years. I've worked in direct partnership with the agency and many of its staff members over the years. I have seen this agency get elevated by some administrations and minimized by others, and I've seen the struggles that the staff of the agency has faced by the process of getting shuffled around from agency to agency, reimagined, reconfigured.
Hang on a second. Carolyn, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, somebody just muted themselves. Thank you.
Okay. That creating this permanent office to end homelessness is going to create the sort of stability that we really need to allow the office to build the long-term capacity that it needs to serve our most vulnerable unhoused citizens. I believe that the, in the bill, the office, we set forth a clear mission, duties and responsibilities. There's some really strong value statements in the bill, including following evidence-based models, promoting race equity, and, most importantly, consulting with individuals with lived experience of homelessness. I think this permanent structure will actually enhance the relationship between the office and the city council and recognize that ending homelessness requires partnerships and commitment of the entire city government and not just a mayor or a single agency or system. We think that ending homelessness is possible. This new office will help bring strong leadership, transparency, and accountability to this most critical mission. I spent my entire career providing legal representation to people experiencing homelessness and those at risk, including helping individuals obtain a variety of housing vouchers and different programs and maintaining those housing vouchers. So I know what a difference permanent affordable housing can make in the lives of families. My written testimony discusses the scope of the affordable housing crisis, cites lots of reports and studies and data. You know, we are drowning in data on this issue, and people are still suffering. So now is the time to take some action. I think it's easy to get overwhelmed by the size of the affordable housing process, and sometimes it leads to some paralysis and inaction, but we have to find ways to move forward. Doing nothing is not an option. The creation of a permanent local voucher program is a strong public policy statement by Baltimore City that in the absence of federal and state resources, Baltimore will find a way to help its own citizens. And that Baltimore recognizes that the weight on homelessness is with housing. And this bill will create the structure of a local voucher program that can be implemented on a small scale now, but also have the ability, over time, as funding is increased, to expand and serve more individuals. You know, no single program will be perfect, no single program will solve the affordable housing crisis, but we must persist and move forward. And again, doing nothing is not an option. I really want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We have some other experts that are here to provide testimony. So thank you again for this opportunity, and we hope that the committee issues a favorable report on the bill.
One of the things I think is so important, again, if we're talking about the homeless population, again, having a voice for people who do work in the field and who represent some of our vulnerable citizens in our city. So again, thank you for the work that you're doing and being doing it in the field. Is there anyone, I do want to provide opportunities for anyone else who had comments. So it looks like we're going to need a couple more minutes. Hold on. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have a few people who have their hands raised. Do you want me just to go through and unmute them?
Sure, sure.
Okay. The first person, I believe, that has their hand up is Winston Philip.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Councilman Bullock and council members for the opportunity to testify. As was said, my name is Winston Philip, and I currently serve as the Chair of the Baltimore City Continuum of Care. I'm here today to provide you with some background information about the COC. Some of you are very versed in the origin of this continuum of care, but for those that aren't, this might be helpful. The Homeless Emergency Assistance and Rapid Transition to Housing Act of 2009, known as the HART Act, amended the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. Among other changes, the HART Act consolidated three programs, the Supportive Housing Program, the Shelter Plus Care Program, and the Section 8 Moderate Rehabilitation Rehabilitation Program into a single program known as the Continuum of Care Program. The COC program is designed to assist individuals unaccompanied youths and families experiencing homelessness and to provide the services needed to help such individuals move into transitional and permanent housing with the goal of long-term stability. More broadly, the COC program is designed to promote community-wide planning and strategic use of resources to address homelessness, improve coordination and integration with mainstream resources and other programs targeted to people experiencing homelessness, improve data collection and performance measurement, and allow each community to tailor its program to the particular strengths and challenges within that community. Each year, HUD awards COC program funding competitively to nonprofit organizations, states, and/or units of general-purpose local governments. In turn, recipients of that funding may contract a subgrant with other organizations or government entities to carry out the grant's day-to-day program operations. That funding translates to roughly $23 million to the Baltimore City Continuum of Care. The COC Board has the authority to designate one or more entities to lead essential activities of the continuum. The appointed entity roles are the Continuum's Collaborative Applicant, which submits the annual COC Consolidated Application for Funding and applies for a grant for continuum of care planning; the Continuum's Housing Managed, Homeless Management Information System, the HMIS system, which operates the Continuum's HUD-required HMIS on its behalf; and the Continuum Support Entity, which coordinates, directs, and advocates for the work of the continuum, the continuum and the board. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services is currently designated to fulfill these roles. The Continuum of Care has adopted a five-strategy plan, as was mentioned before, to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring in Baltimore City. And just for the purposes of this hearing, Strategy 1 is super applicable. Increasing the supply of affordable housing is essential in our efforts to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring, and will yield the best and most cost-effective long-term results. There are six interventions within this strategy: to analyze current housing inventory and need, create new affordable housing, launch a local voucher program, support and promote policies that prevent and end homelessness, and expand the Medicaid pilot and health system partnership. These interventions present a robust, multi-pronged approach to expand opportunities for safe, decent, and affordable housing and supportive services to promote the highest level of independence and community integration for the range of individuals and families impacted by homelessness. The COC believes that homelessness is solvable and that the solution to homelessness is housing and services that promote and sustain housing stability. We are committed to preventing and ending homelessness in Baltimore City and understand that this can only be done through community-wide efforts. Thank you for your time and consideration of my comments.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Philip. Again, it provides more context that we definitely need. Also want to, I see Anthony Williams wanted to testify as well. So again, if he wanted to say a couple of words, we'd be open to it. Hopefully, we can get you in here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, yes. My name is Anthony Williams. Permanent housing is the solution for the homeless. That's permanent housing. I am a person with lived experience, formerly homeless. In 2015, I received a Section 8 voucher through Healthcare for the Homeless, through the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. I just came up on my 15th, no, sorry, not 15th, my five-year anniversary of being in a Section 8 apartment, one bedroom. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have a voucher. Everyone that is either in hotels or in shelter, I would like to see them have that opportunity, period. First and foremost, I, I would like to work with the work group as well, if I could. But it's very important for us to act now. It's urgent. The coronavirus isn't going anywhere so far that I see, and people are very vulnerable. Having a Section 8 voucher for me and living in a one-bed apartment has saved my life in many levels, health-wise, mental health-wise, medical-wise. All those things helped me to achieve goals, to have, to be able to look around in my apartment and have the ability to continue to work to end homelessness. The goal, I believe, in Baltimore City is we can in homelessness. I also support the local voucher program because that will give the opportunity for people to move into permanent housing and, and not have rules and regulations put on them in certain other types of agencies, but that you have your independence as a person. This is the first time in my life that I had anything in my name to say that I have a place to go. Now I have a contract, I have a, you know, rental lease, and I'm very happy. And further, fore and foremost, I would like to say that ending homelessness is what is keeping me alive and well. And I would like to also thank Dorsey. I'd like to thank you, Bullock. I'd like to thank Carolyn Johnson. I am speaking on behalf of a person with lived experience. So I would love for this voucher program to be urgently passed and put forth. This is crucial to lives. I've lost a lot of people. I knew a lot of people that were, that I was with when I was homeless that are no longer with us, either through drug addiction, either through freezing to death on the streets, either contracting diseases. So it's very important for me to see Baltimore City, my beloved city, born and raised, to end homelessness. And with that said, I'm-
Well, again, thank you, Mr. Williams. You know, it's always great to hear from the King of Howard Street, and also in terms of, you know, as you mentioned, your lived experience, I got some off of Dorsey on that one. But also, you make a critical point, which is that housing does save lives, and so, you know, your lived experience bears witness to that. So again, thank you for your testimony. I know that there are a number of folks who would like to testify, so I'm just asking everybody to try to be as concise as possible, just so we can get through the list. With that being said, we'll go on to the next person who wants to testify.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next person on the list is Corey Smith. Mr. Smith?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Okay, I'm sorry about that. This is grassroots nonprofit technology.
Understand.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm here, I'm here to testify in support of the bill on behalf of my organization, Charm City Companions, the Humane Society of the United States, Maryland Votes for Animals, and the Maryland SPCA are a partner organization here in Baltimore. We are in favor of any policy or otherwise effort that will elevate housing because we every day feel and witness the impacts that housing instability and poverty have on our clients across the city. Charm City Companions works with some of the most impoverished sections of Baltimore City, and we're a human animal support service. We provide pet wellness services to households to improve the wellness throughout the household. And our cases include families that are impacted by, you know, they're a tiny, you know, a tiny sliver away from, from losing their housing, as well as having clients who are homeless. So we really feel like it's important for us to show up for housing issues and to express our support of any legislative efforts that will elevate the housing opportunities for people in Baltimore City. We've submitted written testimony, so I, so I want to, you know, limit my oral comments just for time's sake, but we're very grateful to have this opportunity to weigh in and support of this legislation. And, you know, we hope, we, we can tell just from this hearing, it's clear that solving these issues is no small task, and we have great respect for everybody involved, and we are happy to be a partner in that if we can be of any help.
Well, absolutely. As you mentioned, you know, we have a lot of work to do, but again, your work in the field, supporting our folks, really means a whole lot. And we did receive your written testimony as well, so again, thank you for that. We'll go to the next set of comments or testimony.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next person is Corinne Cory Warren.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, Cory. Hi, so I'm Cory Warren. I'm a staff attorney with Disability Rights Maryland. We are the protection and advocacy agency mandated to advance the civil rights of people with disabilities in the state of Maryland. And part of that work is, we are trying to increase opportunities for people to live in communities in safety and affordable and accessible housing. We are in support of this bill. We believe that this bill would help reach that goal. Just a couple of numbers in support. In 2017, HUD found that nearly a quarter of individuals experiencing chronic homelessness in the United States were persons with disabilities. Studies have also found that people who moved to permanent supportive housing and then are phased into housing that is more appropriate to their service-level needs as they stabilize has resulted in reduction in shelter use, hospitalizations, reduction of length of stay per hospitalization, and significant reduction in unnecessary incarceration. One of the amendments that is also in this bill is specific, the amendment language regarding prioritizing- The amendment language regarding prioritizing accessible housing, our organization would be in strong support of that amendment. We believe that providing accessible housing aids individuals with disability getting into housing that accommodates their needs and avoid being warehoused in institutional settings. It also means that the resources being used for extensive permanent supportive housing are allowed to be targeted to the individuals who need that. But individuals who do not have as extensive support needs are still receiving rental assistance and are able to reside in the communities. Even for individuals who are coming out of institutional settings, who may need permanent housing and extensive supports, a lot of times, they stabilize, they need less supports, but they're still going to require some type of rental assistance, especially for those who are an SSI, which is often $765 a month, which is less than the market rate for an efficiency in the state of Maryland. So Disability Rights is in support of this bill, and we are also in support of that particular amendment. Thank you.
Thank you again for your testimony. At one point that I'll make is that, you know, the folks who work in the field are really some of the experts. So again, we thank you for addressing some of the details. And as we move forward, trying to incorporate some of the comments that are being made today. I know Councilman Dorsey is listening intently, as are, I know I am, and I'm sure the rest of our committee members are, as we take up these issues. So again, thank you. We'll move on to the next person who wants to testify.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Next, we have Dan.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dan Faraco. Nice to see you all. I just wanted to make a couple of comments because I spent the first three and a half years of my law career as a legal aid attorney working in Brooklyn, New York. And I represented hundreds of tenants. They were all either seniors, or the vast majority of them were families with young children. And every one of them had some form of rent subsidy that made it possible for them to keep their home. And I just wanted to relay some of that experience to inform your thinking here. I mean, I would say at the outset, and I assume this conversation is going to happen at some point. I feel the need to happen here. You know, what's the right use of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? You know, I'm not sure this is it, but I do think, you know, you have a serious problem here. And if that money isn't being put toward anything else, why not? Obviously, the, you know, the reason we rely on federal money for this, or, you know, New York City had a massive, massive pool of money to devote. And for them, it was just a brute calculation that, you know, homelessness is far more expensive than a rent subsidy of a few hundred dollars a month. But, you know, if you start doing the math, you know, say you want to keep somebody in their home for five years, and you want to give them, you know, give them $500 a month, you know, suddenly, that's $30,000 for one family, and you start doing the math. And it's, you know, it's helpful, but at some point, it might be a drop in the bucket. But those are questions for you to decide. I mean, I would just, looking at the kind of the eligibility stuff, I mean, I assume the point of legislation is to kind of really constrain the agency that's ultimately going to implement this. But I guess, to me, I would ask you to consider just thinking very practically about this kind of regulation. I think very little of it needs to be in a statute. And from my experience, it was very simple. You know, you knew someone needed help when they were getting evicted. So are you getting evicted? Is the household getting evicted within the class of people you want to help? So that's a question you have to decide. Is it a senior citizen? Is it a household with young children in school? Or are it people who are currently in a homeless shelter you want to help? You have to make those decisions. But once somebody is getting evicted and then crucially, has with this assistance, let's say a couple hundred dollars a month, let's say $500 a month, the household has enough income from whatever other source to continue paying the rent with that subsidy. So you're saving the tenancy and you're preventing homelessness. You know, once you get real with it, those criteria decide who's going to get this kind of help. And I'm a firm, firm believer that there is no way to implement this outside of a very defined need that is yoked to what's going on over in the housing court. I mean, I have my questions about that with the other CARES Act money, like these abstract kind of applications that people say, "I'm owed," and the landlord says they owed. Like, when you're dealing with public money and you're dealing with landlords who want that money, because this is, as far as they're concerned, free money, you know, it's really helpful to have third-party supervision. You know, my job happened in the courthouse. The people who gave out these subsidies, now, Section 8 was different. So this is a different animal. But what I dealt with in New York, most tenants was very similar to what you're trying to set up here. There, it was run through the Department of DSS. You know, the people who had the subsidy money were in the same building as the court that was evicting tenants. And you would find within that pool of tenants, people who were in real need, who you could actually help. Because you're going to have way more people who have the need than you have the resources. And a lot of those people who are in need, even if you want to help them, they won't, your help will not fix the problem because you'll give them $500 a month, but they don't have any income to pay the rent anyway. So within a process that's basically supervised by a court with an attorney involved, you get everyone down to brass tacks. So if there's money owed, you pay that. If there's a lease, you make sure it's right. And then everybody signs something so that you know, after you give this money, that the family gets to stay in their home and they can rely on pieces of paper that protect their rights. Because every day of their lives after this, you know, it's going to be them and the landlord out in the real world. And we know there's a lot of, you know, a lot of unscrupulous landlords out there that I would not want, I would not want tenants having to deal with arguing over money. In New York, actually, there was a very specific case, and I'll add here just because it may be interesting to you. For years and years, there was a, it was a federal lawsuit brought by my office, actually. And the name of the lawsuit was, the name of this woman named Barbara Jigget, J-I-G-G-E-T-T-S. And what it was, was an informal program, something similar to what you're setting up here, that recognized that, you know, because rents were so high in New York City, tenants needed more than the basic shelter allowance they would get through the welfare system. So again, that process mostly happened in court. And so you have a family, they owe money, they're going to get evicted, they have kids. You want to keep them in their home. And you're going to make choices that, of all the people who are at risk in this city, you're going to give some of them this subsidy. The way to do it is based on needs. So I would just, and I would say, look, I think you've got to have some lawyers involved. It's actually yoked to a, some sort of... Because again, my salary is basically paid by the city of New York because they knew it was valuable for legal aid attorneys to protect people from homelessness. And I would suggest you consider those things. And, you know, that's my comment.
No, I'll just say, you know, Dan, I appreciate that comment. Again, you know, for the legal aid side, and I know a lot of this, you know, you mentioned your rent court and thinking about landlords and tenants. If we're talking about a voucher program, that's another side that we have to be considering. So again, thank you for that comment and that testimony. At this point, we'll move on to additional testimony.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Next, we have Hannah Roberts.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, Councilmember Dorsey, and those who contributed to the drafting of this bill. And most importantly, thank you to the people with lived experience of homelessness who provide critical expertise to inform our work. My name is Hannah Roberts. I am a Baltimore City resident and former chief of staff for the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, having resigned earlier this summer in response to the administration's decisions pertaining to that office. I am here to share my perspective, having worked in that office, and explain why I believe it is in the best interest of the people we serve to support this bill. Paul Baylor was a passionate and committed advocate who spent much of his final years addressing systemic issues within our homeless service system. Facing the inhumane and terrifying choice between sleeping outside and staying in a shelter during the COVID-19 pandemic, Paul was stabbed to death on the street in the middle of the night. No one in our community should be living in a shelter for years. No one should be seeking shelter in a facility with code violations and a heating system that doesn't work properly. No one should experience one of the worst traumas of their life in a program that isn't sufficiently funded to provide supportive services. But those are all things that Paul experienced in our city. Today, I reflect on Paul's life as one example. But with thousands of people experiencing homelessness, hundreds who are chronically homeless, we must acknowledge that despite the valiant efforts of many, we are failing far too many members of our community and in the process, depriving ourselves of their full contribution. A failing that disproportionately impacts Black, trans, and queer residents. Our community deserves an office to end homelessness with leadership that is held accountable for delivering on the mission embedded in its title. This bill will promote stronger accountability, which is critical. But accountability alone will be insufficient to address such deeply systemic issues. No office can realize this mission alone. And from my own experience within MOHS, I know that success will require much broader support and investment. When budgeted cuts are proposed, as they have been in the past, we need you to understand the implications of those cuts on already insufficiently funded services. When people complain about the conditions in shelters, we need you to know what it looks and feels like inside. It is my hope that this bill will facilitate not only greater accountability, but also a greater shared understanding of the problem and collective commitment to its solutions. I also support this bill because the proposed local housing voucher program, inclusive of a move-on strategy, is a creative and cost-effective solution based on national best practices and the recommendations of our community and its action plan. Notably, the local housing voucher program will not only create new permanent housing, but it has the secondary benefit of maximizing the use of our limited permanent supportive housing inventory for those that are most in need of it. This is an imperative in Baltimore City, where the need for both types of housing continues to grossly outpace their availability. There are strong examples across the country of effective move-on strategies that provide low-barrier permanent housing using a variety of funding mechanisms and sources. A move-on strategy is, in fact, so widely accepted and recommended that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has incentivized its use within the competitive scoring of COC applications, a process that provides our community's largest source of federal funding. We need diverse and smart investments in both prevention and housing solutions to drive reductions in homelessness, and this program would provide a proven and effective tool. The challenge of ending homelessness is daunting, but it is not insurmountable. People's lives depend on us. This bill is an important step forward, and I encourage our city council and community members to support its enactment. Thank you for your time.
Again, thank you for your time and your comments. Again, when you start, again, we mentioned the move-on strategy and understand the scope of the problem. So again, that's very valuable, as well as being accountable. So those are some key takeaways. The next person to testify?
The next person is Isadora Stern.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go right ahead.
Hi, thank you. I thank you to everyone, all the council members here and everyone else attending the meeting. My name is Isadora Stern, and I am here today with the Maryland Fair Housing Action Center, which is a program of the Maryland Consumer Rights Coalition. And our program works to provide safe and affordable housing for Marylanders free from discrimination, harassment, and code violations. I want to be brief, so I think we've established that there is an affordable housing problem here in the city. And homelessness arises from that problem. I can speak to you from a fair housing perspective that we have seen that there is an unequal distribution of this housing burden across protected classes here in Maryland. So we're looking at the risk of homelessness being nearly two times as high for Black and Hispanic households and white Hispanic, sorry, than white and non-Hispanic households here. It's also higher for single-person households than it is for families. These indicators show us that although there is a need for affordable housing here, that that is a fair housing concern. It is also related to creating racial equity in the city. I also want to mention that this bill is coming at an opportune time because the Home Act just passed the Maryland General Assembly this past session and will come into effect October 1st. This bill expands upon the Baltimore City Home Act, and it will make it illegal for landlords to discriminate against prospective renters based on their lawful source of income. So that would include people who receive alimony, social security benefits, and housing vouchers. So with those additional protections, this bill really has the potential to create meaningful change here in Baltimore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. It's always great to link it also to what's going on statewide. I know here locally, you know, we look at income discrimination and that being a major piece. And also, Dorsey was somebody else who was a big champion of that as well. So appreciate that effort. And they also mentioned that equity is always an important piece as it comes down along a racial line. So thank you for those comments. The next person to testify?
The next person is Matt Hill.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bullock, members of the committee. My name is Matt Hill. I'm an attorney at Public Justice Center. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this important legislation. Public Justice Center is in support of the bill, strongly in support of the bill. There are many conversations, I think, as folks have alluded to, about how do we actually end homelessness? How do we get people off the streets and into housing now? And this is one concrete, specific way that we can do that now. And so I'd encourage everyone with concerns to come together and work those out because this is a critical component to make that happen. And I just want to clarify one thing. I mean, my understanding of this, the way this works, and it took me a few minutes when I first heard it to really get it. But it's that if you have somebody in permanent supportive housing, one of the 800 or so units that's funded through the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services right now, and you would give someone a voucher through this program that no longer needs all the supportive services, it then opens up one of those permanent, excuse me, PSH, permanent supportive housing slots for somebody who is homeless right now, right? So they come in, so for each person you give a voucher to, someone comes into PSH, permanent supportive housing, with the supportive services that you need. And so this is targeting, as I understand it, and, you know, Ms. York can correct me if I get this wrong, folks who are currently homeless right now because of that process of moving folks off of PSH, which opens up new slots. I want to just comment too, I'm also a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission. And I want to make clear that, you know, I at least have supported from the beginning a voucher program like this with the use of Affordable Housing Trust Fund money that would specifically focus on folks who are homeless. The other buckets in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund are, in general, not used for persons who are homeless. I think that the subsidies can be layered with other subsidies and reach people who are homeless. But in general, this is one of the only buckets, the only allocations that's actually going to address people who are homeless in a very concrete and immediate way. And I think that's critical. It's not a huge allocation. Yes, I realize the trust fund's funding source is, it fluctuates from year to year. But this is only a $1.3 million allocation out of, you know, I think right now we're looking at $13 to $15 million a year. Still hoping to move up to 20 at some point. I want to say too that I support a statutory, you know, guardrails for this voucher program. I think it's important that tenants have due process if they're going to be terminated. And so I represent tenants in all sorts of eviction actions. And you have to have those due process guardrails. Otherwise, you're just leaving up to an agency to determine who's going to be kicked off of a program, who's going to get into the program, and who's going to be kicked off the program without clear guidelines. And so having this kind of program set out in statute lays out those guardrails to ensure that tenants get constitutional due process, both in terms of getting in- to ensure that tenants get constitutional due process, both in terms of getting into the program and in being kicked off the program. So I will, I support this for the reasons that other folks have already said. I don't, you know, I don't necessarily think that $230,000 administrative costs, it sounds high to me, but if that's what it takes to get this program off the ground, again, those are upfront foundational costs that hopefully the council can build upon, the mayor can build upon in coming years to get more money into the voucher program and get more folks off the streets. And so for those reasons, I think it's a good bill, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Again, thank you, thank you, Matt, for the work you do at Public Justice Center, again, you know, as it relates to tenant rights, but also your perspective as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission. Also, the level of detail that's very useful. So thank you for providing that. We'll move on to the next testimony.
Okay, then the next person is Lawanda Williams.
Yes, hello, and good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. My name is Lawanda Williams, and I am the Chief Behavioral Health Officer at Healthcare for the Homeless. And to share briefly, for those who might not know, we are a federally qualified health center working with individuals experiencing homelessness and housing instability. And last year, we served nearly 10,000 unique households, many of whom are dealing with the indignities and the injustices that accompany living one's private life in public spaces. So we at Healthcare for the Homeless have long known that housing is healthcare, and in line with that recognition, we have worked for decades to house the most vulnerable neighbors among us. You know, our organizational focus of our housing work has been to provide permanent supportive housing services to those who are the most at risk. It's important to note here that these risks aren't grounded in any sort of inherent deficiencies that reside specifically within our clients. Because if that were the case, you know, these deficiencies reside really within all of us because we're really one in the same. But rather, these, these, these issues, these risks are due to the cumulative consequences of living in homelessness. So things like trauma and mental health challenges, mistrust, substance abuse, all of the medical anomalies that come along with, with living on the street. And so the, this current global pandemic that we find ourselves in right now has really highlighted a lot of these inequities in a way that is new and surprising and shocking to some people, but is quite familiar to, to other people, and I would imagine quite familiar to our clients, the people that we serve. So and to be fair, you know, what we are currently facing is not a singular crisis really, but it's a dual one because racism too is a pandemic, and it's been the sort of proverbial arbitrage, you know, around the necks of all of us, all of us Americans for far too long with Black and Brown people being, you know, the folks who are carrying the brunt of the wheat. So our permanent supportive housing work has, you know, served our most vulnerable neighbors, moving them from the streets directly into housing without any preconditions, then providing them with the cadre of the intensive services that help them to retain their housing placements. So these services range from, you know, individual therapy and group therapy, housing searches, assistance with lease signings, tenant landlord mediation supports, repay services. So we're managing folks' money, medication support, health education, all of these sorts of things that make it possible for people to maintain these placements for people who are quite vulnerable. And we provide these services because they're needed, one, but also because we also believe that people can recover in ways that bring meaning to their lives. And so the problem now is that, you know, when clients no longer need this level of intensity, they don't need us in the same ways that perhaps they did in the forefront because we have this ethos that we're working on that people actually can recover, and we provide these services towards that end. There really isn't a way or a less intensive transition option within our current housing continuum. So there's no space for people to move on and transition. The other problem is that market rate rents are not sustainable for many people and leave people rent burden when they can cobble together the money to pay their rent. And so there are people in our city who are poor, and they are in need of housing and support, and they need the subsidy because rent is just way too expensive. But they might not always need the intensive services to live successfully in the community. In fact, in some ways, you know, I think it's a bit disrespectful to imagine or suppose that just because people have had, just because people have had a history of homelessness means that they will never be able to reach a sort of independence that all of us sort of appreciate and have in our own lives, right? If we move from this premise that we are all the same, which, which we do organizationally. So, you know, we believe that this local voucher program is a wise response to this issue, the lack of affordable housing for people who don't need intensive services anymore, and that it can serve as a point of transition for those who don't require that, that intensity, but they still need rental support because they don't have the income to provide stable housing for themselves without that support. So we are very pleased to see this moving forward. We are looking for opportunities to be able to inform that process and partner with, with, with the folks that are doing this work to lend our expertise to that, to that space. And we, we welcome this opportunity to see the folks who have been excluded from housing get, get their chance. So thank you.
No, thank you for your commentary. Again, you know, a couple of things that you raised, I mean, you talk about how the pandemic has re-unearthed a lot of these inequalities that have existed over time anyway. But again, talking about how many of these issues are overlapping. So again, we thank you for also, you know, being at the table and providing this testimony. We'll go on to the next person to testify.
The next person is Tisha Guthrie.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilman Bullock and Councilwoman Dorsey for sponsoring this bill. I am here in support of Bill 20-592. I am a commissioner on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And as Matt Hill just indicated a few, a few minutes ago, we have discussed the, the use of the trust fund dollars. And even though they are gravely insufficient, we are definitely in favor of utilizing those funds to provide a local housing voucher. I'm just going to also indicate that being a lifelong Baltimorean, I am also someone who has faced not homelessness, but certain circumstances which have deemed me in situations where I have needed a housing voucher, and I am very fortunate to be using a voucher at this present time. So how do we reach the goal of homelessness being rare, brief, and non-recurring? First, we have to admit and acknowledge that homelessness is not a moral failing, but is a symptom of a system that is inequitable, also a system that is detrimental to the health and is a threat to our overall public health. Dr. Gregory, Dr. Gregory Branch very eloquently and insightfully deems housing as a vital sign. And I'd like to expand upon this and say that it's not just a vital sign for individuals, but it is a vital sign for our community, which is on the, the meso level. And also on a macro level, it is a vital sign for our cities, our states, and our, our country as a whole. As such, you know, we really need to take initiative and invest resources, both human resources and revenue in addressing this issue. We live in a country where in no state, in no one of our 50 states, is there enough affordable housing for those who require it. We live in a country where those with the least pay the biggest portion of their pie just to remain housed. Being rent burdened is clearly a risk factor and a symptom that can and often does progress to a state or to stages of homelessness. Whenever, whether it's acute or a chronic condition, you know, we must acknowledge that homelessness is a health indicator. On a minor, I'm sorry, it's a health indicator on a micro, on a meso, and on a macro level. When our people are suffering, it is our responsibility to answer. So the office of, I support the development of the office of to end homelessness. And to that end, it would be a big step along the path to ensure that homelessness is indeed rare, brief, and non-recurring. And I'm just going to end this with some words by James Baldwin. And because, and I'm reading this quote because we in fact know that when families suffer under homelessness, our children, our children are living that same reality. And so James Baldwin says, "For, for these are all our children." We will, we will all profit, buy, or pay for whatever they become. So I just would like to be on the record and state that I am in favor of this bill and hope for a favorable response. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. A couple of things, I mean, mentioning, you know, using vouchers and how, you know, a lot of us have been in circumstances and needed some assistance. So again, I'm glad you gave voice to that. Also, given your role on the Affordable House Trust Fund Commission as well, just want to thank you for your work. And thank you for your, your testimony. And as a father, couldn't agree with you more in terms of what happens for our young people. So thank you for, for your testimony. We'll go on to the next person to testify.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we have a call-in user. So when you hear, I believe, two beeps, you'll be unmuted and you can talk. This is call-in user number six. Did you want to say anything? We have your number here as 443-897. Okay, I'll go to the next person. Call-in user eight, you should hear two beeps. This is 443-943. You should be unmuted now.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. This is Mark Council. And I'd like to just add my two cents in supporting this bill, that we need this bill. Homeless, and the conditions of the shelters that I have lived in, it's terrible. And being the fact that this pandemic is still going on, and now we face the flu season, we can't go back into these shelters. It's, it's like a death trap to be there. A lot of people have already stated that. And I'm like, I'm like, the city is gambling with our lives to put us back in these shelters where it's more, I mean, I don't have a fighting chance if I was to go back into these shelters. I really need to have permanent housing. And I'm thinking that permanent housing will save my life as well as others. And I really support this. I really hope that this bill passes because I really need it. Like Anthony Weigand stated, that it saved his life. And I want that same, I want that same opportunity to do the same thing. You know, to have like five years into housing or 10 years or whatever it might be. But I really need this for myself and others. Thank you.
Let's say thank, thank you, you know, again, from the lived experience and what it means to not only be homeless, but to be in a shelter where the conditions are. And that's something that we'll be looking at at a later time. We're going to have an oversight hearing to deal specifically with some of those challenges. So again, I thank you for your testimony. Just want to check if there's anyone else who is listed to testify who's still in the line?
That was everyone, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And then for any of our panelists, are there any additional comments? As I mentioned, we are going to hold this open, and we'll have an additional work session where we'll go through the amendments and any additional work we need to do. But at this point, before we go back to the poll sponsor, are there any comments, questions from any of the panelists or members of the committee?
This is Katie York with Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. I would like to address a couple of the testimonies given today. The first one was from Matt Hill, who mentioned the, the due process concerns. We're very much in, in favor of setting up a fair, you know, grievance and arbitration process, especially as the end result could be somebody losing their housing. But when we talk about due process for a housing voucher bill that is based on a unstable funding source, I, I think there, you have to envision what happens when the bill comes due and there are no funds. Is there due process in basing a housing voucher program off of a program that does not have a stable funding source? Because I, I did the math on this, and quite frankly, if you're lucky, and that's not including having to have that $1.3 million cover the administration costs for the voucher program, if you're lucky, about 60 households could be served through this. If $1.3 million does not materialize, that means that those households will lose their funding. They will likely lose their housing. So I question the, the due process around that. I would also like to bring attention that the bill, as it's written, is only vouchers for families. So, Mr. Council, as you addressed it and are hoping that this program would help you, it is actually not open to individuals. Maybe that is a point which the committee would consider addressing, but it takes away, if it's written into the statute, it takes away any decision-making ability of, of the agency who's actually running the voucher program to make placements into it. So if it is exclusively for families exiting permanent supportive housing, by definition, it will not be serving individuals that do comprise the majority of service seekers in our system as a whole. We, we support a more permanent approach to ending homelessness here in Baltimore City. I think it's, it's very important. We are not in opposition to the creation of a housing voucher program, although there are obviously concerns about the funding source behind it and, and perhaps some of the additional costs and services that would need to be built in to make it successful. Yeah, those are, those are the concerns here today. And I hope the committee will take them into account as they continue to work on the bill.
You know, Katie, again, thank you for sticking around for the rest of the hearing. As I mentioned, we will be going into a work session, so this will be useful. Before we close out and move on to the next agenda item, which is also going to take us a while today, I did want to provide an opportunity for poll sponsor, Councilwoman Dorsey, for any final comments before we adjourn this portion of our hearing for today.
Thank you. Yeah, before I make the kind of final comments that I was planning to make, I'm just going to correct very clearly that on page six, line 18, the word "family" is defined as meaning one or more individuals who reside together as a household. So very clearly, individuals as defined in this bill are eligible for program support. And with that, I just really want to thank the folks who testified here, the lived, the lived experience folks in particular, and the leaders of all the various organizations who partner with the city and work throughout the city to serve the homeless population and very vulnerable people in the city needing housing assistance and other wraparound services. I couldn't have put it better than Hannah Roberts did that this program is a national, you know, this, this type of voucher program is a, as a move-on strategy is a national best practice and that it's a wise and judicious use. national best practice, and that it's a wise and judicious use of whatever limited resources we have available. As I noted before, it is clearly identified as something in the continuum of CARE's action strategy, action plan to create a move on opportunity in the kind of portfolio of opportunities that the city and its partners are able to create. And I think that that's really important to recognize is that we're, we're talking about adding something to the portfolio, however small, it's an improvement, and it's one that needs to be made. And so what we're saying is, it's not really, it's no longer the time for further delay on doing something that we know is absolutely necessary as a part of our strategy to end homelessness. And so I just really thank everybody here for their participation today, and in particular, Carolyn and Matt, and those who helped me in drafting this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the hearing. Thank you to the rest of the committee members, and I guess we'll all be here for the next hearing as well. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Councilman Dorsey, and thank you, members of the committee. So for those of you who are here specifically, for those of you who are specifically here for the housing bill, again, you are free to go. For those of you who are assigned in for the Indigenous Peoples' Day, hang on because we're going to, going to jump right in.